According as.
Good. Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board, Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, and I'm calling the meeting to order at six thirty-one. We are in the Enfield DPW conference room and also online, although nobody has signed in as a guest, at least as of now. So, members present, starting with Linda, I left.
Linda Jones.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
David Frack.
Tim Jennings.
Nate Miller.
Okay. We know that Paul is away on business and he will be away on business at our first meeting in July as well. Anybody heard from Bill or Ben?
Kirk said he couldn't make tonight.
It's not bad.
I have not heard of Bill or Ben are not going to be on the company. Maybe they'll come in.
Four, five, six.
We have six people, that is a quorum. So we can continue and we can conduct business. There are no hearings, there are no conceptuals. Eric, you have a selectmen report today.
I had a triple conflict for the last meeting, was not able to attend, so.
Okay. Uh, Rob Taylor. Your report.
I guess I would highlight the, we haven't met here since we had the planners' conference on June sixth, which was a couple of weeks ago. I would say it was a verdict success, we had a great crowd, I was planning on about seventy-five and I think we got closer to eighty-five people. Community building was certainly intimate for the, for the day. But it was, it was a good show, you were there?
I was not, no.
You didn't get to come?
No, I, I had a schedule conflict, yeah.
No, there's planners from all over the state, some, some of the state people too, some of the Office of Planning and Development, a few DES people. Uh, David, you were there, Eric was there, I was very grateful to you guys for coming and helping out, very grateful to the selectmen. Uh, John Cluett came and gave opening remarks, sort of set a nice tone and Eric and I tag teamed a little presentation after lunch. It was neat, the morning session was Lebanon came in and we made some presentations of work that they're doing. At some point, it might be a good thing to either have me give a synopsis of what we learned, what they're up to, or maybe even invite one of their people in here to talk to us because they've got some really out-of-the-box thinking going there right now. They're doing some real serious housing overlay districts in, in West Lebanon and Enlebanon that are, I'll call it aggressive to, to really try to facilitate some housing. They've, they've done some interesting things with allowing some subdivision of very small lots down to like four thousand square foot lots with no frontage. Like I said, if it's a rectangular lot, there's some room in the back, they're letting people subdivide land in the back and use a shared right-of-way driveway access to get there. It's really interesting, I, I would describe it this way. It sounds like groundbreaking stuff, but as they've discovered diving in on this, it's kind of what they already have, you know, it's sort of the housing that came out of Lebanon when it was a mill town, you know, and, and they built housing for mill staff, which is not dissimilar to what we've got here with the duplex on Shaker Hill. So that was kind of fascinating and even a woman that did a lot of the presenting, she lives on a lot that has something very similar that they're now shooting for. And they also have some really neat stuff happening at city level with some of their land that they own. It's interesting, they have a bunch of properties that for one reason or another they've come into possession of, and everybody always said, oh, no, no, you can't develop those, are undevelopable. But when they actually dive in and actually look at them, it turns out, yeah, you can build some housing there. So they're actually working on some, some fairly big projects to build housing that will actually have priority for city employees and school districts. Not exclusively, but there will sort of be a, almost like a lottery that you can jump into to get housing if you work for the city or SAU eighty-eight. Uh, so that was really fascinating, we did have a update from Noah Hodges, who's the Office of Planning and Development, I'm sure you know him really well. He did a nice little presentation on what was happening at the legislature, gave us some updates about pending legislation, some of the stuff that's already been approved, what was happening. And then Tim Corwin, who's also a Lebanon guy, he's their director of, he's their zoning director. He got up, he's actually an attorney and he is the Planners Association Legislative Liaison or some, some kind of a title like that, so he's tracking legislation. He got up and gave some summary of what he was looking at. He also talked about a few of the Supreme Court cases that had been decided recently that had bearing on land use. The most notable would be the Conway case about the sign or mural that they painted with the donuts and danishes. New Hampshire Supreme Court said it's not a sign, it's, it's free speech. And so that could have some implications down here, I mean. Could be, uh, the guy that owns the brewery is going to paint some really awesome murals of beer. So it'll be interesting to see what the sort of effects of that are around the state. I've been asked to speak at the New Hampshire Mortgage Brokers Association meeting coming up. Noren Bernas, our assessor, is also going to be there and one of our attorneys from up in Hatfield. Jim, remember Jim's last name?
I don't.
Raymond, Jim Raymond, super nice guy, very senior attorney partner at the firm. The, the goal there is to get the mortgage brokers education about land use there. It's, it's very interesting to me, I find that realtors and real estate people really could use more information about how zoning and stuff works. There's, there's no formal training for them to get into the business. There are some accreditation, like, uh, things that you have to achieve to keep your license. And so I've worked with the local Upper Valley Board of Realtors, but anytime they, they want training, our manager's been very supportive of me helping to do that. It's obviously get some exposure for Enfield as a community. We've, we've certainly got some good things to talk about, as you guys know, it's largely stuff that you guys have been working on, so that'll be coming up soon. Generally, fairly busy on the real estate speculation side, as I usually talk about at the beginning of summer. Not a lot of volume in terms of applications, which is not a bad thing because we've got other stuff going on, but I think Larrabee Farms will be in soon, but I haven't heard from them in about a week or so. They were, you know, asking what deadlines and so forth were, but I, we thought we might see them at the second meeting in, in July, that's still kind of where I think the glide path would put it. We'll see. Not quite at the end of June, so they've got time. But that's all I'll do for my update unless anybody has any questions.
Okay. I guess I'm up next. Legislative report, uh, last time the legislature met was two weeks ago tomorrow. Several land use bills were taken up. Uh, most notably HB two ninety-six, which allows a local governing body, after review and comment by the planning board, or after establishing that the private road identifies and complies with policy adopted by the governing body of the municipality, has voted to authorize the issuance of building permits for the erection of buildings on said private road or portion thereof. I don't know what that means, but the more important part of two ninety-six changes the appeal period for abutters to appeal to the ZBA. Currently, under current law, it is a reasonable time period as set by the ZBA. The new legislation says it, an appeal shall be taken within thirty days. And we tried to, in committee, we tried to extend that to forty-five or sixty under the theory that sometimes there are abutters that don't live in their property year-round and it might take them a while to find out. Anyhow, that's where it is. HB three forty-two, that's the thousand-foot radius bill. That did, that did not pass. It was a committee of conference and it failed.
Thousand-foot, uh, radius for what?
Okay, that, that was, that was the bill that, um, if you have a lot that you want to develop, you can add the same density of housing as the average density within a thousand-foot radius. We discussed this bill, um, maybe you were in Florida at the time, I don't remember, but basically if you work at Crystal Lake, which is zoned R three, all of the lake shore property is developed at maybe quarter acre, being generous, eighth acre postage stamp. So a person who had a vacant lot that bordered on.
Boys Camp Road.
Okay.
Boy. Thank you, Dan.
They, they could develop their three-acre lot to the average density of the lake shore. So that one died, fortunately.
It's like a good idea. But it died.
Yes, yes, definitely. HB four fifty-seven. That one passed. And that's the bill that says a municipality shall not adopt an ordinance that restricts the number of occupants of any dwelling unit to less than two occupants per bedroom and the governing body shall not enforce any such ordinance. Such legislative body shall not adopt any ordinance based on the familial or non-familial relationships or marital status, occupation, employment status, or the educational status, including but not limited to scholastic enrollment or academic achievement at any level among the occupants of the dwelling units, including but not limited to college students and the governing body thereof shall not enforce any such ordinance. That bill kind of came through the House to hopefully solve a problem that neighbors to UNH were complaining about for years, which was the, um, the town had an ordinance that said no more than three unrelated people. And because of the housing shortage on campus, landlords, uh, would have liked to basically pack people in two to a bedroom, three to a bedroom, they're not related. And it was, uh, an idea to try to keep the college students on campus. So that one, um, that one passed. In terms of how it might affect us, communal living homes, sobriety houses, um.
You said passed, you mean it's the Senate and the House have agreed?
On this one, the Senate and the House agreed, it's.
With the governor.
On the way to the governor, I'm assuming the governor will sign it. HB six eighty-five, there was no agreement reached by the Committee of Conference and that's the one permitting manufactured housing in all residentially zoned areas. And the last thing that I have for you is the Housing Appeals Board, which in somebody's version of the budget was non-funded and eliminated entirely. As of this afternoon, it is funded for two rather than three members, which seems a little problematic because you could have all sorts of ties and the way the housing board was originally conceived, each of the three members had a different background, a different skill set, knowledge set. So we'll see what happens, it's in the budget and my guess is that the budget is going nowhere. But we'll find out about that tomorrow or Friday because they've told us to plan on being there for a special session on Friday in case the budget doesn't pass, which it doesn't look like it will. Or if it passes the House, the governors threaten to veto it, so.
This is about the police and fire retirement benefits primarily?
But that's the public statement. It's police and fire and there are two other things that she said publicly and it is our hunch that there's probably some other stuff that she is not saying publicly. So there you have it. Any questions on our legislature? Good. I'd like to move the minutes past after it takes long, let's do the minutes and then, then we'll get to Renee. So minutes from the twenty-eighth of May on the table for discussion.
I'll move them as submitted.
Second, okay, I have one, I think, correction. Line ninety-six. It says there is a two-acre parcel where a house is located and from personal knowledge, there is currently no house there. And I believe what was said in the hearing was that they, they intend to build a house there. So if you would check that with me.
Yeah.
And, um, people will accept, Nate, will you accept my amendment?
I, I will accept it, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, let's take a vote, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions. Okay. Um, Renee, you're on.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me tonight. There's a little bit of a schedule snafu, but we worked it out and glad to be here, so. Um, so we have been talking about trying to get some of this pen to paper and really taking off and drafting some of these changes. The team and I have kind of really formed in a little bit on the downtown district, being the first one that we kind of started to tackle. Um, so you have a packet there, pass around, I apologize about the copies, I sometimes hate printing, but I think you guys are very studious aboard and so I thought having the paper and being able to get home and digest it is always a good thing, too. So, uh, yeah, so again, we're focusing in on the downtown, um, which current state is in your zoning ordinance as the commercial business. So we took the CB portion of the ordinance, starting in four oh one point four. Can I jump in? I can take the mouse if you want, that's. The downtown there, so we start with the current state in four oh one point four in your zoning ordinance, this is as it stands today, right? So this is the area that we're talking about, um, how it's currently defined and what the allowable, um, uses are. So we'll scroll down a little more, we're still in current state, quite hefty. And one thing that, um, out of the conversations from you all is then is to clarify, try to concise where we can, make it, um, you know, approachable, flowing easily and right now we're on page four or five, four of the current. And then we still have special exceptions to go to and that's in a whole other section right now as it stands in your ordinance.
Let's see if it prints in properly. I don't have those.
Oh, so this is going to be a little bit different, sorry, yeah, it's going to be a little different. So you, this is, um, chunked out into a presentation, but you should have on the first few pages, uh, is the, if you start here with the strike-throughs, that's current state still, but with our kind of pen to paper and working through. So this is where we're in, is the editing. One thing that we noticed, um, and that exists in some other ordinances, um, again, conversation from the board, wanting to take a look at other ones and see how it's structured. Sometimes, you know, residential districts will take precedent and then you move into a commercial business or commercial district area and a lot, sometimes we'll see as a first statement of any use permitted in the R one is permitted within here. I did add, and we'll see that, I think I edited it as well, a slight change in addition slightly here, but basically what that does is it takes all of these B through G and anything that says in R one, out. And so it really cleans it up because you can just say with that first opening statement, anything in R one, we also will allow in CB. So as it stands today in your ordinance, all of those B through G are in both your R one and your CB. So it's just redundancy, so we're trying to kind of clean up and see where we can make it a little more concise.
Um, I think the.
Yeah.
I think the approach is, makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's just that the village district, which is the larger area.
Yep.
Whatever that is defined, actually should, it should, so it shouldn't reference R one.
EV. Yes, correct, correct, so that being, yes, exactly, so because we haven't started EV yet, right now it's R one, but when we do EV, we'll then cross-relate and it'll reference instead of R one, they'll say whatever the underlying zone of EV is, because correct, that is the next outer ring, if you will, of the zoning, it would reference that. Instead of any of those uses in EV that get truncated from R one would then get truncated into commercial, or to downtown.
The other thing is, these list of permitted uses for the various districts and existing ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
There is some level of consistency between the chapters of the districts, but there's a lot that is not consistent, the wording's.
Yep.
Different.
Yep.
Oddly put and so forth.
Mm-hmm.
And then the way it's, uh, it's structured.
Yep.
That also is, is awkward.
Yeah.
Makes it very, as usual.
Yeah. I have that as a point of discussion at the end as well, yep, definitely. Yeah, any other comments just on kind of this initial thought of editing and again, kind of having the first layer of the uses being the exterior ring, if you will, of the zoning, which again, as to point out, will be EV once we get. Finalizing some of that.
Kipped over the, the meets and bounds, three and two.
Yes, just because, um, until, unless the board is sure, I mean, we don't want to edit those, if we put it in italics to, that it needs to be edited, um, if. But I think there are some changes within this, the CB is bigger than the downtown proposed and Route four takes over some of those, so the meets and bounds will need to be adjusted.
We don't want meets and bounds at all. The definition of boundary determined by the zoning map.
Okay. So it could just be eliminated completely?
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, we've had discussions, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So I'll just strike that out in my notes and all, put that as a strike in the draft.
Yeah, yeah, because then you could change the map, you don't have to change all the meets and bounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, and people can understand it, and people can understand it.
Yeah.
Because you can't understand.
You look at the color and you're like, is my lot in there or not?
And, and especially because we're going by lot lines rather than streets.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Doing meets and bounds, if you had to do them by lot lines, would be just an incredible chore.
Have we agreed upon the map at this point?
I don't think so.
That's why I also kind of left it.
No, that's why it makes it easier. If, when we agree on the map, then we know what it's included and you don't have to change any meets and bounds. Right, because we've still got Baltic street is kind of up in the air.
Mm-hmm.
This chair is going to.
Take the one in back, that's, that's more comfortable.
It's a bad one.
Oh, is that a bad one?
What was that?
You're being suspicious.
I am not, I won't sit in that anymore.
You good?
I, we're going to find out.
So far, so good.
So far, so good.
I think I had one one time that just slowly kept like going down, it's happened.
Linda, how did you like those chairs of Canaan last night?
They were too big.
The big fancy black leather ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I love these.
Really nice comfort.
I need to put on another hundred pounds for that to fit me.
Next time we have a thing there, we'll find a smaller chair for you.
Or I'll bring a backrest.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
No, 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 it's okay.
Let's, uh, let's continue.
And minimum lot size shall be one acre for buildings not serviced by town water. So isn't the entire downtown area served by?
That's what I was wondering too, kind of, I'm pretty sure it is, but.
Yeah.
It is.
So it doesn't, so it's not really applicable anymore. I, well, so I guess the question is, someone could still choose not to be serviced.
No, they cannot.
Oh, they cannot?
No, they have to hook up.
They have to hook up.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is, is our minimum lot size of quarter acre then, does that work?
Period. If, if, if that first clause doesn't apply.
Yeah, right. It's a quarter acre. Right.
Eric and I are proposing that it, it not be defined. That, uh, right, chief?
Yeah, I'm trying to find what I. Yeah, because written down is true.
We think we want to get away from that arbitrary lot size and just have, have the, uh, potential use constrained only by the setbacks. Things like, um, if we're going to do any sort of permeable, impermeable surfaces, square footage calculations, that, that kind of one.
So if. If somebody, uh, okay, so.
Yes, yes.
If somebody wanted to, I'm just trying to like play devil's advocate a little bit here, it is interesting concept. If somebody owned three or four lots and they merged it.
Yep.
It would still be by permeable or permeable lot size, whatever they end up putting on that.
Yep.
The overall size would encompass.
Yeah, so the, the only reason that.
Yeah, so the, the only reason that. Lot size in there. Is to act as a governor, let's call it, on density housing. And it's an, it's an imperfect and arbitrary number feel. Eric, help me out if you want to explain this a little better.
Yeah, well, so what I, in my simplistic mind, as I was making notes for myself, I wrote down for lot size, where municipal sewers used. Lots may be any size so long as all other requirements are met. And so then there will be other requirements that you have to meet the setbacks. You have to meet a driveway requirement. You have to meet. A height, you know, a height requirement. If you have an impermeable surface requirement, you have to meet that. But as long as your lot can meet that. You're okay.
That makes a lot of sense.
What's the unintended consequence of that? I mean, you kick twenty units to one or acre lot.
Well, but if somebody can.
That's what I'm saying.
If somebody can do that.
I know.
Then what's the problem? But, but they're not really going to, because like one of the requirements will be a parking space per unit. And a quarter acre is not to have enough parking. For twenty years.
You gotta, that's what I'm saying is. It does, that's so you can't, it's, yeah, it's what the lot will.
What the lot will support.
Unless you're gonna have three floors of underground parking, that, that'll, you're gonna have a hard time beating the height required. If you do that, so, okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, you gotta, you gotta think through all the different.
You gotta stick through all of it.
All the different things, but if you, if you have appropriate setbacks, you have appropriate type of requirement, you get appropriate parking requirements. And uh, if we want to think through a stormwater management, sort of, I think. You know, the same water side. If someone can beat it. So and we're, we're actually. Adjusting this for the entire EV district. Not just the downtown or the.
The entire village district. Yeah, for the rest of the district, what I wrote down was where onsite's, where on onsite sewer is used. A lot may be any size so long as the lot can support onsite sewer disposal and all other requirements are met. Proof of onsite sewer disposal capability. Shall be demonstrated before subdivision is approved. Yeah, because it has to be certified.
Yeah, if it's a new one, it's got to be a certified sewer, especially if it's trying to go small, they have to. They have to show that they can do it, because there's all sorts of, you know, if your neighbor's well is too close, you can't do it. But anyway, but that's not what we're talking about right now. So, question. Should we say no variances permitted? Because if somebody had that tiny lot. And they said, well. I want to do this, but I need a different setback. I'm going to the zoning board. And the zoning board being what it can be says, sure.
Well, I think some of the setbacks are gonna be. Fire code, like I'm loving it right now. The fire code is the term we're gonna set back. And I doubt if.
Can we actually?
But I think that, I think that in some of those extreme cases, things like, they're probably not gonna get it. I'd be surprised if they got a variance to a fire code. Or if they got a mortgage for something that violated a fire code. Or if they got insurance for something that violated a fire code. If it violates the, violates the fire code, you can't get an occupancy part of it. So it's, they can give any variance they want, but they can't. You can't build it.
So I think when you start shrinking it down, you start running into things like that.
How much flexibility? I, I, I think of the downtown, you know, what is the downtown? What's in New England downtown, right? We didn't have big setbacks when these downtowns were built, right? Are we trying? In my mind, it's the most constrained area and we should give the most relief that we possibly can on setbacks and dimensional requirements.
Yeah, I mean, and that's part of why Tim and I were talking about, as long as you can meet. The requirements, you can have any lot size, because if you do it on an eighth of an acre, you can. Some places you will be able to, and some you won't. There are some places where you can't get a driveway and. Even if there's enough land, because there's not site requirements or things, there are gonna be cases where you can't actually. Do everything. And, and there would be a. P-gravity drive, it seems like we had some words to the effect. You can't subdivide a lot into a lot smaller than. Text, meaning that. I, I couldn't subdivide off a. Piece of land that's ten feet wide by twenty feet long, for instance. There's no way to build that thing on that except for a utility. And maybe we don't have the wording put together for that, because that's, that would need to be. Interesting.
Oh yeah, because the present downtown, quote downtown Main Street doesn't beat any setback with what happens. And yet it works.
Has the downtown area been, the definition been changed from that map?
What do you mean? I'm sorry, but.
I'm reading the definition and it doesn't match the map. Number V. Within the downtown area, find as those properties abutting Main Street, Blacksmith Alley. Between High Street and Oak Grove Streets. Blah, 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 whatever.
That, yeah, so that's existing today. Um, that has, is kind of left up in the air as far as like where. It ends up falling and how the board would like to approach that specific one. I have left that kind of hanging over. V is currently elusive at the moment.
Oh yeah, because we would, I guess we would show what the map is.
Right.
You wouldn't have.
You wouldn't have to explain, you wouldn't have to explain any of that if your, if your meets and bounds is now the zoning map. That could be eliminated.
I think what we need is a matrix. List out all the potential land uses that we might counter. The uses that are in here in the existing ordinance are, are. Probably only touch on maybe twenty-five percent of what they should. There's a lot of implications and suggestions, the way things are worded, uh, it could be. More easily or more clearly defined. Anyway, if we had a list of uses. Then categorized by commercial and residential and so forth. And then a column for each of the districts, existing, those districts. And where the two lines cross, it could either, yes, it's permitted, or. It's uh not permitted, or it's by special exception, or it's by, we want to use conditional use permits too.
You do or don't? You do.
I think we all like that.
It's easy to read and understand.
Yeah, didn't I hear you say earlier that you're planning on a use table?
Yeah, there's a use table and there's a dimensional control table as well.
Yeah, so uh, I just happen to have spent quite a bit of time on that thing. Send it to you and you guys take it from there.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, we're in the special exception. So this is again, existing today um on the screen here, so. Um, these are special exceptions, which are, you have to go before the CBA. Um, and read the requirements there, outlined in sections four one, four oh two. So uh, what, some things that have kind of bubbled up through some of the conversations, public forum, other things would be wrapped with that. The chi, the multifamily dwellings. And uh, we've kind of also around a little bit daycare centers. We know that. The downtown, you have the school nearby, um, you know, if someone were to propose a daycare center nearby to then offer after school care, things like that. It makes sense. So again, just trying to take that barrier out of there.
Yeah, and again, that's where. You know, taking the barrier out, yes. Is it, is it then by conditional use permit?
By right with um site plan. Because it would still have to sell a business, so it would still have to come to the board for a site plan review.
It has to be the state regulations on daycare centers, which means you've got to have a playroom.
And it's inspected, but.
So there's still some there. I mean, and again, that's just. You know, the board can certainly, if it's conditional use permit and you have, you know, you just have to have those items outlined in the conditional use permit on what they need to require. Uh, so that's just another layer that you, uh, current use permits exist currently for. Yeah, or conditional use. You don't use them now. Okay, so. Definitely something to worth looking to if you wanted to. Yeah, I mean, daycare would be site planned still, so I was kind of thinking that would still be a catch that would still be looked at. And multifamily as well. Uh, in R1, multifamilies up to three units are allowed with a site plan, so. You could do that in your CB as well too, and you'd still require a site plan.
Rob, could you back up one page? Aircraft.
That would stick out like a sore.
Yep, so this is current, this is current, we're still in current. So as you see, we'll get to the editing. Um, we struck through all those that are currently in, again, R1, and again, we'll amend this as we get to the Enfield Village, but. It cleans up all of this. We will touch on them.
Question, Rob. Can you deny wireless towers?
You can't.
You can't, so it's not a special exception. It wouldn't, you cannot. Yeah, site plan, but you can make them get a special exception. It's just with site, you have to have a site plan.
We might have to look at that, yeah.
Yeah, because you can't deny wireless tower.
Certainly, there's, there is FCC. I remember in Plainfield, we had this, we had this owning that said, you could only go ten feet above tree canopy. Well, the trees are growing, you know, like that's kind of silly. In, in five, six years, the ten feet is not gonna be there.
Just add another section of trust.
So I know that the FCC came in and sort of overrode. Pretty much every zoning.
Wireless tower.
One minor thing though. I guess the fair thing is gonna be a lot everywhere, where we have the fairies. Maybe we're just having a period about another.
So it's, yeah, so it's currently in R1.
This might be the appropriate place.
Yes, and I think I left it, the fair, you said. Yep, so I left it. So even it's um. Run or sponsored. So it's in R1, which means in A, it's allowed. So any use.
What I'm saying is all of those organizations are in the center, they're not in R1. So the, the reason it's written in R1 now is because the whole village is actually R1. With exceptions. It may be, it may be that we actually want this team that downtown district to not know one.
Right, it'll be in EV.
It's actually in several districts. It's not just R1. The fair part.
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm not sure you want to just keep it in this district. Because Los Alamos was really a better place for it.
I'm not necessarily making a statement on that front, I'm just saying like, the place where we actually have these events is right here. Not in other parts of town. It may be that we just want to allow it here and not in other parts of town. To represent what's there. I'm, I'm actually fairly agnostic about, but it's just one event a year.
What's the line between a use? That's allowed and a special event.
That's right.
That occurs three days a year.
That's a good point. Because it's a special event.
Yeah, it's not.
Structure.
It, yeah, it's not a permanent use of the land.
You're not putting a newsman park in town. Yeah, or, you know, a, a permanent fairground, so.
Yes, that would be a different animal. You know, a permanent fairground with a. Tractor pull, you know, pit and all of that, that's a gap. That's a permanent thing as opposed to. An event that exists three days a year.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Versus fairgrounds, yeah. If you were to like say, I want to put a fairground. Like Hockington Fairground in there.
I think we could, um, I feel like until we get that matrix. With a lot more um identified uses that we can say yay, nay, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather wait on that and kind of trying to. Pick through these sentences.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, I, I understand what you're saying about like, yeah, I, I. At this point, this is at the point where you can certainly, yes, we can take it to the next step, would be to. Define any more uses that you want to include in CB. I think um, our goal right now is this is. So this on the screen right now, we now have the downtown district um on one page. As it stands right now. And again, uses, you can add more, things like that. But I just think that is, you know. Couple of things that we have seen, and again, just trying to clean up, like you had two things that took in professional business offices. And another one that mentioned banks, it didn't really flow. This is a better flow than what we typically see in ordinances. Again, shops, instead of shopping centers, because you're talking about downtown. So you're not really looking at a shopping center, you're looking probably at like shops. And that's what, again, going back to the public forum, what we heard from people was more like that smaller shop kind of mentality.
But does this, does that matrix, you know, what did, get away from about fifteen pages worth of stuff?
Well.
Actually does.
It should.
Yeah, because your matrix is going to have all the allowed uses for all the districts. It's gonna be one page. Something like that, it's gonna get rid of fifteen pages of dialogue and text.
And it's gonna make it so much easier to figure out what you can do. I, I've seen other um, other municipalities zoning ordinances and. It's, you know, it's like sliced bread. It's no good. Well, with your old permission. I could work with Renee on that. As I said, I've got probably two thirds of that. Already in a matrix. I think they may have a different matrix format that might be more suitable. You know, whatever works best, it doesn't have to be what I do. It seems like the kind of things we would need to talk about, Renee, are. What sort of uses, potential uses are out there that aren't even in our ordinance? That we have need to thought about. You gotta drill down to a little bit more specifics, some of this stuff. Various categories. It's like uh, I ran across the word, outdoor recreation. Well, there's a lot. That is in that list, it's not even in the ordinance that you know will eventually come up. We'll put it in there kind of, kind of. Anyway.
Hey, Rob, could you possibly pull something up on the internet real quick? Just Google something for me. If you want to. What I use is the list of kind of land uses. Type in ITE. Land use codes.
That's what we.
There you go. There it is.
Just that first one right there?
Now click on that first PDF right there. That's a master list of land use codes that I always kind of rely on.
Adult cavalry.
It captures, it captures everything. Uh, and, and so you could pick and choose it. Scroll down, there's, you know, different categories of. Residential, commercial.
Yeah, so let's, why don't we just use this as, as the basis for the matrix? You know, except set it up in a matrix. Rob, I'm sorry, go ahead. Thought you were done. I, I was gonna ask Rob if he could just circulate the URL.
Absolutely.
And that way we can all look at it at home. And that way we could all look at it at home and decide, be able to make some contributions to the discussion.
I mean, that's a general, you know, if you're looking at kind of the universe of land use code, you know, land uses. That's kind of it.
If you come back to our next work session, we've got this list in a single column. And the district's on the side, already populated with those items that are already permitted in our existing districts. Then we can just go one by one and say, yes, no, so forth.
Yeah, some of these are definitely not going to be applicable to.
Yeah.
Right.
You don't think we need a water slide?
A zoo?
Well, I wouldn't be surprised if that. Well, isn't. Our previous town manager wanted to put in a canopy walk. Canopy walk above the trees. Remember that?
Yeah.
But, uh, why not? In the right place.
Like bins.
Yeah, like bins. Yeah.
Exactly.
So, yeah, you could take this and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just as, as a universe of land uses, this is a pretty good.
That's good.
Commercial airport is only allowed to contribution district.
Yeah, I think we struck the landing strip out of the special exceptions. What is that doing in the commercial business district? Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's not far fetched. There was a. Just off the potato and root four.
Yep.
New intersection there. It was for a while. Oh, yeah. Some guy's running a paraglider operation.
Right.
Oh, yeah. And you could see a neighbor complaining about that.
Yeah.
To Rob and.
Yeah.
Saying, hey, is this allowed? And it could be allowed if under the right circumstances. So.
Yeah.
There's one of those in Charlestown.
Oh, yeah.
Glider.
Couple of crashing birds there.
Well, there's somebody who lands their paraglider on the fall fields.
Yes.
Seen one a couple of times.
Yep.
There, there's a big one on Route four west of Rockland. I've seen that a couple of times. Talked to a few people who jumped off and twisted their foot. With their paragliders.
I can't imagine.
And they love it. They love it.
Well, you're really taking a leap of faith that.
You know, you could, you could do that over.
The ski area.
Okay, moving right along.
Look at that. I grabbed that mask. I'm just gonna show the last. Is it? There it is. Okay. Thanks. So I think the uses, yeah, I think definitely looking at that, I think knowing that we can. Nix out this and because it's going to have that. And then this is again, proposed and kind of cleaned up, special exceptions, took out a couple of those, the daycare center. Uh, multifamily out of special exception. And then the, uh, landing strip in the downtown district doesn't really make sense. Appropriate use of the land. And, and this is also, you know, some of the conversations that came from the public forum. One of the questions specifically I remember at one of the tables was, do the current uses, are they. Appropriate for the district to that point? And, uh, for example, you know, like the. The gentleman mentioned the car wash that's near the school. And so that's really like land and the storage units. That's really prime land that could be housing. Um, that's walkable to the school and things like that. So.
Can't be anymore. And it's in the east four district.
Right.
No, not Jake's CB.
Uh, Jake's part one. So it will be in the. But they're looking back. It could have been something other than a car wash.
Yeah.
Housing. Yeah. I mean, it's really, it's.
People look at that prime spot of, of, of land in town and that, that's a, let's say, low intensity use of that land.
Yeah.
And it's not creating also getting value per acre. It's not creating great value per acre for the town and the revenue side. So. Yeah.
We didn't really talk about the map and I, you know, that's fluid and we'll. We'll finish that at some, some point in the future, but. I, the group I was in, people didn't think that should be route four. They thought it should be. Downtown, that, that kind of.
The west.
Lebanon side of, of the red board. You know, so there, yeah, they, they saw that. The, the, the west side of the route four being very different than the east side of the route four.
Yeah, I don't think I. Higher ground.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't buy that. Or at least I'm not persuaded.
And it is only to, cause it's not all the way to the left line. I think what. You know, your left line is.
Yeah.
Still over here. It's really just still kind of that initial drop into the downtown.
My, my group had the opposite feeling, right? And felt it was very appropriate because it's already a string of businesses there.
Yep.
It's already a commercial activity in many of those spots, not all, but.
I think people didn't see that air. They saw that in, in the group I was in as a gateway. Uh, and they didn't see that as a place for drive-through restaurants and, and that sort of thing. They saw that as a transition area into, into the downtown. And that if they envisioned the drive-through restaurant type of thing, it'd be on the other, other part of four.
Yeah. Well, though, we would end up with, if it became part of the downtown, we'd end up. With that having businesses that aren't permitted in downtown, the car wash, the storage facility. The man, the cabinet shop.
Cabinet shop.
The heavy equipment, heavy equipment dealer. Um, everything there was, well, the. Who's in the old.
Enfield garage.
Yeah. Who's in there?
Courier.
Medical courier.
North courier.
Medical courier.
And so, and revision solars in there. So. Yeah, so you just. And we've got a large lot right there where that arrow is.
Yeah.
Um, should have, should have some business potential on.
Or housing.
Or housing. Either one.
Or both.
Who's ever the first developer that comes in with a big. A big checkbook and, uh, wants to do something.
I don't know. It's an interesting discussion because I, I can kind of see both sides of it.
Yeah. I mean, I could be persuaded, but I'm, I'm.
Cut it right there.
I, yeah, I mean, the, 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 the group I was in were just, they saw that. As being a different animal than the east side of Route four. And that kind of a. You know, the, the heavily automobile oriented uses that are likely to occur on the east side of Route four. May not be, you know, the entrance to downtown that people want to see. But.
Question, who is responsible for stabilizing Oak Grove Street?
Town of.
Town of Enfield.
The town road.
Yep.
Is there any state help available?
I don't think so.
No.
Because mother nature is sort of.
Mother nature's going to make that a one-way street at some point.
Or no street at all.
Or, yeah, or a, a slide.
Right. We could make it a water park.
Yeah.
So what, what could we discuss tonight? We might be able to read some consensus on it would be helpful.
Um, I think, let's see. So. Where we've got so far is we cleaned up some of that. I guess, does, do people agree that, you know, any redundant pieces? Can go into the next layer of the district. So we'll leave that A as kind of any use permitted in what will be the EV district will be permitted residential or, yeah, uses there.
Yeah.
Um. Things that. Um. I mean, this, I, this had come up in our meeting. Kind of reviewing some of the stuff, accessory use. Um, currently the ordinance just says, your ordinance currently says a use incidental to on the same lot. As the principal use. It kind of ends in that first sentence. Other ordinances sometimes clarify, such as this one, where it says for clarification, residential districts. Private recreational facilities such as a tennis court or swimming pool are accessory uses. So. Just kind of like all of a sudden it came up of, there are these other uses that might come up. I know in other towns pickleball courts come up, things like that. In that use matrix table. Does residential recreational fall under that? Or would you prefer to change maybe the definition of accessory use? And allow kind of something more broad that if it's a private. Resident, insubordinate to a residential recreational use.
I, I, I think on your camp on that. You know, somebody's idea of an accessory use. Could be a tennis court, swimming pool, um. When it becomes a commercial operation.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when you've got to say no.
Yeah, but you can have accessory uses to any use.
Yes.
Commercial operation can have accessory uses.
Well, yeah.
Uh, storage shed to support whatever the commercial usage.
Right.
Yeah. And I think this is more the residential district. To do with a private use, clarifying that. But to your point, the accessory use would still hold the first sentence. That whatever's incidental to the principal, if that principal was commercial.
Yeah, I think that it's, 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 it's awfully vague, that definition there, that first sentence.
The first sentence. Yep. And that's pretty much where yours stands today. It's, it's not exactly that. It's very close to that first sentence.
Nate, do you remember if there's a state definition of accessory use?
I don't. I.
Neither do I.
I don't, I don't think there is one, but I, I could look. Renee could look, I'm sure.
Yeah.
You know, it, it's interesting because one of the things that's popular these days is pickleball. Right? You have somebody that builds pickleball court in their backyard in the middle of the neighborhood. And you think, okay, well, it's, you know, it's just an innocuous use. Those, those.
It's noisy.
They're very loud.
Yes.
And, and the neighbors, you know, might not react to something like that particularly well. Uh, so, you know, there might be someplace where some level of review is warranted to.
Yeah.
For the harmonious.
If, if you've got a basketball backboard and a asphalt driveway, that can get a little noisy too.
Yeah. So, so how could that be handled? At the, at the town manager or Rob's level outside of something. But can it be?
And there's no noise or intense during the day.
I think where this comes into play a little bit, if I may, sorry, I'm a jerk, but. The other thing too, that's come up in other towns that I've seen is, is it a permanent structure? Or is it movable? So to your point, a basketball hoop on the asphalt driveway, we're not permanent structure. A poured pickleball foundation or tennis court that's poured and then then becomes a primal. Do town, does, do you want to consider that a permanent structure? That's where towns sometimes.
Well, it's important for the setback issue.
And the property surface.
And I'm thinking, nobody in their right mind is going to want to or be able. To build a tennis court in. The downtown district.
Right. Downtown may not be, but the EV.
You know, maybe, uh, you know, maybe further out in the, in the EV district. And to put a house directly across from the, uh. Old school. Not the big gift group from like the, uh, Craftsman style or the next one down. They got a large lot there. You can do a pickleball and do a tennis court probably. I mean, there are not many lots, but I think there is, there might be a few. I'll, I'll grant you that.
I mean, there's a balance to be struck here, someplace where you don't want to over-regulate somebody's backyard swimming pool. I mean, that, nobody wants to, you know, throw a bunch of red tape in front of that sort of thing. But certain types of uses, pickleball, maybe one of them things that are, that have the potential to generate noise or be disruptive to, you know, neighborhood or something like that. May warrant some level of review.
I think, because I think the core is what you just said, is it's not the use that anybody has a concern with, it's the noise.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And, and this is likely to happen. After the property's been subdivided, built on. And once years later, they would decide to put in pickleball court. We wouldn't have, probably have any issues with the tennis court or swimming pool or anything like that. It's just, that's the only thing.
I mean, it's, it's the thing that comes to mind because it's, it's just. Growing in popularity.
Or some other new sport that's noisy.
At frisbee golf. Takes a lot of space.
Okay. So maybe some more discussion and I can research some more on maybe how other ordinances have defined some of those for permanent structures versus.
So taking it through actually, oh, the permanent structure side, like we have a pickleball meant it's not, it's just like your basketball, you throw it in your bag, we pull it out, we take it down to the basketball court. And then we set it up there and then we take it down, we take it home. So even that permanent structure thing's not really, like if you're concerned about the noise. If I had a paved driveway, I could do it on my driveway. It's just the exact same as basketball.
Good point. So it becomes more and more of a problem as well. And they're getting complaints and then you may have.
But it's a, but it's a noise problem, not a use problem. This is the real fundamental challenge.
I don't think anybody would say, oh, we, we don't like pickleball.
Right. We don't like people swinging.
I think, and I think too, I think you mentioned Nate too, was setbacks. And that's what came up in this other town since that I'm thinking of is. It came up in that they wanted to put it, they only had such space and they wanted to put it closer to the road. And technically what their setback was, but the ordinance didn't cover it per se. So it's really vague. And they're like, it's not, it's not a permanent structure, but it'll, it. It's a cord. They did a pad and they did permanent fencing around it. And so then it kind of became this. Conversation of, and maybe a butters. I'm not sure. I didn't, I wasn't. Very to all of it, but I think it just, it came up in conversation as to what then, right? And so.
It came up.
What their bias.
Project of, right. The parking space, Maple Street. Um, is, is the parking area structured, a structure or not per our ordinance?
Right.
And, and I think we need to look at that section and.
Yeah.
Sog it a bit.
Yeah. Well, it's a question. Can we come up with the backside? Agree on the map? Yeah.
Where you agree on the map is where you agree on what the zones are and where you write. Then you agree on the uses from there. I think we could probably come up with the downtown area. And the only reason I limited to that is because my table. Felt pretty strongly that the village area north of Route four. Had a decidedly different character than village area south. And I'm not saying that I agree with that or disagree with that. But we had a considerable discussion at my table. And I think we ought to at least explore it. We don't have to adopt it, but we ought to, we ought to talk about the pros and cons of why. Um, Maple and May Street. Residences on that are the same or different from, say. Wells Street or Shaker or. One of the numbered schools.
Well, I happen to live on Bay Street. I can confidently say the housing density on that street is almost identical to Union Stevens.
Senior Wells.
Lots are small. I have a lot of distance between homes.
Um, how about? Single family versus duplex? Um, how about single family versus duplex? What, what exists on the ground now?
I think it's very similar to the South Side, I mean.
Right.
Then, so like we have within, I was looking at just around my house, within four lots of my house, there's a four unit building, a two unit building, we're currently a two unit building, building a four unit across the street is a three unit. Up the street is another duplex. And, and May Street has at least several three and two unit buildings. The one directly across from Angelo, right at the corner, is a three unit. It doesn't look like it, but it is.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying, like, it's just when it doesn't look like it, but it is, yeah. It's old a few years ago.
You don't have, um, outside of that though.
Yeah, you may not.
When you go up from there to the Canaan Town line, I don't think there's any multi-family.
And there's certainly one that used to live in it on one of the little side streets, but it's at least a duplex. Off of the street, so I think it's a mix of, it's a mix of housing types.
Yeah. I think they're saying on the other side.
Right.
Wells Street has multi-families. Union has multi-family.
Wall Street.
The bills, the built houses.
And then there's a variety of home businesses. Whether it's contractors or, there's the bait shop up there, there's, um, a few other, a few other things that. You know, it's like, it's a pretty similar use scenario on both sides.
If you had a, had a May Street or Maple Street, which you get past, guys got the painting business, mom.
Yeah.
Yeah. That land to the east, right side of Red Street. It's predominantly wet, lots of, probably a lot of buildings up there that couldn't be built today. Given the current weather. And on the left side, outside. Have, I, I think a little bit more developable, developable lots, uh, as you get towards the Canaan Town. But not many, they're not large.
Well, and the, and the, the big one is already permitted as trail park.
As you get downtown, Eric, right there where the arrow is. Where they, um, just go straight up and up, right there, right there. That's a large lot, probably has some potential in the backside.
They'll warn, they don't want to grill up fire. And that's already a multi-family building, yes, it is.
But, yeah, you could see other buildings being built in the back.
And that lot interestingly has, probably frontage on Front Street, that lot itself. They have some challenges with wetlands, if they ever wanted to connect to, but they do have a frontage down on Front Street. Street far, right?
One thing I didn't see was, uh, allowed, allowable was museums. Did that ever come up? There, there are, here and there in New England, small towns have, some small towns have a, a neat little.
Yeah.
In Chester, there's a map place.
And that, that will be in that matrix, when we get to that line item, we can decide which districts should go in or not.
That's on any and all, yeah, any and all.
So we're trying to finalize the map?
Like to, I guess so.
I, I will throw out there again, I, I still think Baltic Mill should be in downtown.
I agree with Nate. So I don't see that, and so please convince me some why that should be. I'll first tell you why I don't think it should. The downtown area, we are not, will be more restricted in the kinds of businesses that are able to be placed there than will be in the. Number one, uh, we're not going to permit a car wash in the downtown area. We're not gonna permit a used car lot, um, an auto repair shop.
Is that how you envisioned the Baltic Mill redeveloping?
I don't have, I don't think any of us have any idea what that parcel could end up being. All I'm saying is that, the reason I think we should leave it out of the downtown is to allow somebody with money, you can have some creativity to do something there. And while we all, might all like to think it would be, uh, I don't know, elderly housing, you know, after they tear the mill down and they build something there along the river, great, but it could also be your light manufacturing. It could be a, a warehouse, so, just kind of what it is now. So I think if we put the mill in, in the downtown district, we're going to limit options.
For the profit.
For that property.
And I, I think that the Baltic Street is a nice extension of the downtown area. It's walkable. It's, we're gonna have some sort of residential development on Shed Street. And it, it, it has the possibility of creating a, a space that I personally would like to see more aligned with downtown than with the kind of development that's on the floor. Nate, you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I kind of share that same sentiment. I, I, I think one day, the Baltic Mill is gonna be, it will present itself as a significant redevelopment opportunity, probably the biggest one in Enfield. In terms of redevelopment opportunity. And I would hope, given its proximity to downtown, its potential walkability to downtown, what could be done there theoretically, if you had somebody with some, some vision come in and try to, you know? I get to work at Manchester every day, I see how, you know, old build properties have been re-revisioned and, and reused. There are engineers' offices, there's housing, there's, you know, professional offices, there's restaurants, there's those types of uses, I would, I would want to see those types of uses in a redeveloped Baltic Mill. You know, a mixture, mixture of uses of housing and, and professional offices or, or, you know, some higher intensity use that's connected to downtown and, and kind of, you know, part of downtown in some way than the lower intensity type uses that the rest of the reform order were likely be home to.
Like, like you would not like to see that property as a warehouse or a manufacturer.
I think that's a pretty low intensity use for, for.
I agree, I agree. I think, I think that, you know, the fact that it's on the riverfront, I think it's, it's a prime redevelopment project or location. And I think it would benefit the town from a tax point of view. Although we're not supposed to really look at that. I think it would benefit the town from a commercial residential development point of view. And, yeah, you know, I mean, we, we've got an existing downtown, which honestly isn't a lot of downtown. But if you extend it into the Baltic Street area, I think that's gonna generate more of a downtown feel, as it were.
Dave?
Yeah.
Is perhaps the solution to spot zone the Baltic Mill property? So just that piece of property, so that the future's.
I mean, that.
It's not locked into anything.
Well, we would have to, I mean, if we spot zoned it, we'd have to say what it's zoned for.
Okay.
And, or if we did an overlay, you'd have to say what the overlay is for. And that gives us a significant amount of space between the current core downtown, that being Main Street and Baltic. So I, I would not be in favor of spot zoning or anything like that. I, I would like to see a continu- concede be a continuation of what we're defining as the downtown area. And it would be, be able to have uses that are similar.
Dan? I think I agree with, with you, because the other thing it's going to give you is a bridge to Route Four that it doesn't have. Route Four, if you're better off having your downtown extend out Baltic Street from a walking standpoint, because you can't walk down Route Four. So if you've got that developed, all of a sudden, it's a bridge to Route Four, a walking bridge from downtown to Route Four. Along with the forty-eight units or whatever on Shed Street, that all of a sudden, those forty-eight units on Shed Street could support businesses, along with some of the others. It's, it's gonna bring people down from Hillsboro to Union.
My counter to all that is that all of that, all of the district can be done in Route Four District.
Yeah, but there are other things that can also be done in the Route Four District.
So we have a building right now that is, uh, isolated.
Derelict.
There, yeah, yeah. We have a, a property owner that wants to, you know, he's doing what he wants to do. It's all great, it's fine, no problem. That, as, as been said, that property will change hands at some point. It's at that point, whoever buys that is going to have some vision, in fact, they probably won't buy it until they have the vision clarified by the planning board, that sort of. So if they came in here with, with money to do some sort of commercial establishment in that building, that was not, let's say, quite what you guys are talking about, what your vision is. Are you saying that we would say, no? Until we get a proposal that is a, is a mixed-use housing retail development that we envisioned, we're not gonna let you, we're not gonna let you make that investment. So the building sits there, continually sits there, derelict. And, and, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to impress upon, I, everyone, is that you can do everything that you have envisioned. If that's zoned in the Route Four District. But if that should not come to be, anything else that, that fits in four criteria could go in there as well. As to which one comes first, that could be years from now, can we know that? And I, I just don't want to pull options off the table.
I guess my thought, or my reaction to what you just said, is that a developer can always ask for a use variance. And in that case, for a CU, assuming we would have a CU in place. And at that point, if it looked like something that the planning board thought would be very beneficial to the town, a CU could be granted, variance could be granted there.
We have no role to play in the, in the variance.
What?
We have little role to play in the variance.
Well, no, but we do with a conditional use, but we would.
Yeah, so, but we don't want to have a conditional use set up in the downtown district to allow anything in the Route Four District. I mean, it just doesn't make sense to do. I think what we're, we're hoping and dreaming of something and the way we think we're gonna enable this is to have a top-down kind of direction. And, and it's just not going to work. We, we, we need to let that have as much potential for development as possible. Not try to train it at this point.
I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree too.
Well, we'll, we'll take a vote at some point.
Oh, we will, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I, I mean, I get where you're coming from, I just, it's not like the uses that we're envisioning in the downtown district are particularly restrictive for that type of property. And the other things that are allowed in the Route Four District beyond what's in the downtown are so low intensity that it would be, I think, disappointing to see that property that close to downtown develop as, you know, a glorified warehouse or some sort of low intensity use in the future, given its possibility and what, and, and how it has been demonstrated in many other communities, that those types of properties can be nicely redeveloped into housing that's connected to downtown and.
But those properties, that what, what you're, what you're referencing as examples were beautiful buildings, this is not.
Well, let, let's go under the assumption that the building that exists will be torn, will be torn down. And whoever buys it is gonna have to come up with a plan on the same or similar footprint, keeping, you know, all of the setbacks and et cetera, et cetera, in mind.
It's a pretty tight parcel, so that's probably, uh, that's probably a fair assumption.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, whoever buys it would have the opportunity to use the present footprint because of grandfather. And um, lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
Well, anything you envision can be built and done in the Route Four District. Do I get to change sides? No. Well, I'm sorry, but I, I, I actually, I'm starting to agree with him, that we shouldn't stop development because we want to have what we want to have. And that's what, that would, is basically what we're saying is, we want to be more restrictive on someone that buys that, that rather than having it developed, we'd rather have it not developed.
I will, I will say though, if, could you bring, hold the map back up? The one area of that Route Four District that I, I even myself felt a little unsure about was once you're, uh, let's say you're coming from, uh, Canaan.
Yeah.
You pass the first Baltic Street intersection.
Yep.
All right, from that point to you get to the other Baltic Street intersection, you're on Route Four.
Yeah.
Um, most of those properties are, are, are residential. And certainly the Route Four District would just matter-of-factly include anything the EV residential would be in the Route Four, we've talked about that. But what sort of commercial things along that route, that section of Route, that particular section of Route Four, would, would you see that need, need to be in the Route Four, or should that be in the downtown? It should not be in the downtown because to the north of Route Four, you have to cross Route Four. And that makes it a non-walkable type of situation.
Yeah, you get the steep. Yeah, you've got the steep, steep.
You have the hill too, right? Whereas on the other hand, south of Route Four. You've got a potentially walkable area. It's got, you know, Baltic has has an uphill at the very end. But basically, it's it's pretty flat.
Even if a warehouse, a brand spanking new warehouse is installed where the mill looks. As part of the site plan approvals, you you could require a sidewalk on Baltic Street. And it doesn't have to be a specific kind of development to result in a walkable route from Route Four. In the Baltic Union Street intersection.
What's on the other side?
First thing the developer is going to say is why? Do you need to have it for a warehouse?
Why do you have to have a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's 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 the only problem with that. I, that's, that's the only problem with that. You you're not gonna be able to make somebody put a sidewalk in for a warehouse. At the end of the road, if for the last two hundred years, it's basically been a warehouse there that's not had a sidewalk.
Well, it was a.
Well, yeah, it was a mill and it didn't need one and there were a lot more people walking.
Hopefully, we need sidewalks back a little bit.
To decide this for, for you two, for Renee. Should we be paying more attention to what Renee's gonna talk to us about?
I've had some thoughts as you've been discussing this, if I may. I think all good points. I think what this brings me to as well, to reminder, as as we're kind of working through some of the. Editing and auditing the zoning ordinance and suggesting uses is a focus group. So I know we've talked about that part of the engagement in the half is two focus groups. This Baltic Street could be a wonderful focus group to really get a couple developers on a call or in the room. Get, um, you know, maybe, you know, the water has come up, like it's near the river. You know, would you really want a an industrial building near there, near the river? Do you wanna convert it more to, you know? So there are a lot of different people maybe to bring into this focus group. So maybe think on that a little bit, um, and or if there are any connections or start drafting a list of names. Um, of folks that maybe we wanna invite in the next month or two to have a focus group on that. So that's one thing that I was thinking of, and I think, um, I think I, uh, the mill's kind of getting redone. It. Popped in my head was Clermont, um, right on Water Street there. You have the Common Man Restaurant Hotel. So you're having meals and room stacks, and then you also have apartments, um, they put in there year-round rental apartments, and so. Chinburg.
Yeah.
Well.
It was pretty dilapidated.
Some construction on the inside.
But they were great.
It was in better shape with the building. It was no gem to start with, yeah.
But I, you know, I think, you know, maybe I just, it was Chinburg, right? Is that the name I'm thinking of, Chinburg developer? So they've done a lot down south. I've heard that they're coming in, maybe getting some one of them on a focus group call to something like this could be useful.
I wanna be sensitive to the owner. I I don't, I'm not sure. Appreciate. That's having a big, a meeting debate on what the future is, property is gonna be.
I move out the property directly, but to your point, that whole corridor, you could lump in Baltic and the other side of Route Four if you wanted to. If that's.
It's only the mill. There's nothing else there.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, no, I mean, like, he was talking about the, this, does this, do these parcels belong in Route Four? So again, maybe it's that the the property owner doesn't feel so pinpointed.
Interesting, on the north side of Route Four, there are quite a few businesses.
Yeah.
On this side here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly not all, but probably half.
Yeah.
Well, I.
There's the funeral home, there's the, uh, open door.
Door shop.
Yeah.
The.
Audio, video.
Audio video place.
Uh, no, the funeral home's not in that section.
Oh, it's a little further down. You're right, it's not.
It's the audio.
Audio videos on the corner of Baltic.
Yeah.
Four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So we got.
Basically, open door.
But we got the garage door place.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Used to be a doctor's office where that is.
Right, it's part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then there's, uh, Break Laker's.
Yeah.
Large parcel to your upper right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everything else is residential.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it could just almost easily be in the EV, except. Uh, again. What could happen there if it's left in the R four is that, uh. Oh, uh, any of, any number of those homes could be torn down, some retail, you know, thing be built.
I think it's the exact same thing you were just saying about the mill, they wanna put additional restrictions on those properties that are on Route Four.
Right.
Or give them the maximum flexibility is.
Yeah. Let it be what it's gotta be.
Those properties move forward.
And then on the, uh, south side of Route Four, not all the way down to Baltic, but longer. Most of those lots are fairly steep slope.
Yeah.
But there's a little bit of road in there for clearance.
Okay, so some good things to think about, and I think what I'm hearing too, I understand the want to, the desire to set the map. But it ultimately keeps coming back to what the use is, right? So until you feel comfortable with what uses are in this proposed kind of color. Of R four and downtown will help determine, I think, from what I'm hearing, might help determine where you draw that boundary for the purple. And where you draw the boundary for the green, once in that use table, they're pointing a little more.
What's you have to make?
Um, so we'll work on that. Um, the other thing kind of within, uh, the ordinance again that, um. I wanted to raise maybe tonight and get some thoughts, or if you can mull on it some more for next time. Uh, in the current way it's written right now, you kind of have like a a buffer in each district.
Yeah.
But you don't have like a general wetland buffer. Typically, we see kind of one article that addresses. A wetland buffer ordinance overlay. And so I didn't know. What the temperature was there, if we just wanna leave it for the time being, but wanted to bring that again, kind of part of the concise and streamlining some of this.
Well.
Um, garbage.
In the, uh, reformat and ordinance that Eric and I have been working on, there actually is. A section of general uses.
Mm-hmm.
Where I think that would fit. And so that each of the districts refer to that, or those items, like building heights. Or.
Uh, yes, so if you look in your packets that I circulated around, um. Towards the end, uh, before the blue page, you'll see like a dimensional control table. Yeah, you're on it, David, there you go. Um, the big graph. So this is taken from Centipede's ordinance. And, oh, actually, I printed the wrong one. Oh, no, there's two pages, sorry. So there's two. So the first one. Is more the, um, dimensional controls, minimum lot size, your road frontage, your setbacks. Your height limit, structure heights for each of the districts. Uh, it's like that, should be.
Did we go to page twelve?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't remember all of them. Um, and then the second page of the table, dimensions. Uh, that they have as well, page twelve is the kind of shoreline and in the wetlands. What the acreage requirements are, if there's any difference. Not necessarily saying that the acreage requirements for any field would need to change, but maybe to your point, there's a table with. Buffers instead, um, if you're in the wetland overlay, if you were to do a buffer overall. Cause again, right now, it's kind of layered in within each district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's a little confusing there as well. So that was something I kinda wanted to bring up. Um, and then. This format of a dimensional control table, um. I think it's really clean and clear and easy to read, um. But then also some other ordinances, if you flip a few pages onward, um, keep going, there is. After the definitions, there's a commercial article. Um, seven, commercial district from, this is New London's, and this is how they set theirs up. They have uses permitted. And then they go into land requirements, whereas yours right now just flows all in one. Um, at least they have a little bit of clarifying uses versus the land requirements for the district versus the parking for the district. Um, and then on C, uh, C and D, D is residential density, but just different ways to lay out. So. Again, just something to think about in the overall kind of cleanup and give an example of a couple of different options. Um, but that's just more of just getting into that kind of just visually. But.
This is some, some pained English in this. There shall be between the nearest right of way and the extreme front of any building, a yard having a minimum depth of thirty feet. But said minimum depth may be less than thirty feet if a.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't say.
Yeah, that's that's a rough one to digest.
Sixteen.
Yeah, yeah, old English, yeah.
Whole food and home garden produce may be exposed for sale in this district.
The extreme front of any building.
But again, more just layout, um, templates, if you will.
Yeah.
As options. But yeah, New London, I I wouldn't suggest wording things like New London's, they get very much into the weeds. We have an one that, um. Another town has used math, followed after their steep slope, and now we're running into. Uh, some questions on their steep slope ordinance, but that's nice. Um. So anyways, that's kind of the other thing that we had, um, I had tonight for you all, and then I think. The, I think, of priority would be to kind of get on the docket a focus group, cause again, that's part of the hop engagement, and so we don't wanna lose sight of that. Um, and maybe. You know, be thinking on that, be thinking on some of this with the downtown, um, wanna focus, focus one focus group on that. Um.
I think we've already had that focus group. You guys have the data.
Oh, the report, yeah, the Main Street. Yeah. So, um. We have a lot of that. I think, yeah, it's with the engineers now, so we don't have anything, like, we, we have some of the report. But we are waiting on the engineers to finish their portion. Um, so.
Next steps would be the.
The tables.
The, the, the use matrix table.
Yeah.
That we could possibly have maybe, you know, an outline or something out there, or a blank one or something that we could do together.
Yeah.
As a, as a work item at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And, and really, you're just gonna have the uses.
Yep.
The districts.
Yeah.
It's either gonna be by right, not allowed, or special exception. By right, not allowed, or special exception. Those are your choices, right?
Yeah. And to your question, the museum is currently in there under I. It's under education. Look, so educational facilities and museums are currently in there, so they are allowed, but.
And so once we go through that exercise of filling out that matrix, that, say.
Now.
Eliminates a lot of the space of the, the, the existing ordinance, it makes it a lot easier to digest, but then.
Yeah.
We could take that as a reference, once we all agree upon it, that matrix, and. Dial in or vote, or, you know, whatever the case may be on how we think that map should look at the end of the, the end of the day.
Well, what's the plan on, uh, working on the matrix at our first meeting in July? Renee, can you come up with a starting point for us?
Yeah, yep, definitely.
Ready.
Um, we'll do that. Is that July ninth? Okay, I have you guys already on there. Here we go.
Yeah.
Um, should we, do you think you'll have cases or? Or do we have cases? Not for the night, okay. All right, we'll have a, um, draft, and I'll send that over. Um. And yeah, then we'll have a brainstorm session on uses.
So I hear when the engineers are gonna be finished with the Main Street.
I will find out. I have not heard anything, um, but I will check in with the. Uh.
Check in with Tim.
Tim and Megan, yeah.
Over to Des.
And yeah.
I'll see you the day before, I'll text. I used to chair the school board, yes.
I wanted to get close to. How about things like building heights?
Well, I I I would think we do a dimensional table.
Yeah.
After the use table.
Yeah.
So we'll have.
Renee?
Yeah.
The last two pages here called thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Where was that taken from?
Um, so these are supporting docs in the back. Those are. That's New London.
Okay.
As well. And again, more just the template of how they lay out their, um, district. So they have A, B, C, right? So it's just a different template, a way to lay it out. Uh, referencing mostly. I mean, some of the, you know, like. I think I did see your forestry item is rather long. Theirs is simplistic and just says, structurally simplistic's forestry in accordance with BMPs for forestry, so.
They excel the front yard descriptions. I'm just being facetious.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
It's, uh.
Yes, oh, yeah, that's, yeah, and I, again, I am not saying in any way that any of the, those kind of, these.
If they aren't discussing setbacks so much as, shall not be less than twenty-five feet.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
So the front yard, um. You need to have, it needs to be twenty-five feet or greater from the road to the structure. Yes, a separate way to word it.
It's inner, inner, um, what we, within their ordinances, discussions about yard, yards. And we don't have that presently in ours. Do you know why that is a issue?
In Lebanon?
Why yard, why having a yard description is an issue or can be cumbersome?
It, for some reason, they put it in their ordinance, and so did the city of Lebanon, it could be, you know, grass, it's so. I'm just curious, what is the issue?
Aesthetic.
Yeah.
It's for aesthetics. It's so that you have green space and that you have a building setback and you're.
You can't put your driveway in front of the house.
Yeah, it's more for green space and aesthetic view. Um. New London also had, has one where I believe. It was around, it's coming up around their Little Lakes in the B area, so I'm not sure what district that was, but there was something coming up where they even have one where. You have to have fifty feet total on either side of that, or you'd have fifty feet total, whether that's. Ten and forty, or twenty and thirty. There were some variables within there that you could like have. But you, and it, it makes it a little cumbersome, but it's mainly for aesthetic that I've seen.
Um, it's like some of the setbacks on the state roads are different than any of the other streets.
Yeah.
It's a seventy-five foot setback on any state road.
So. What I would like to suggest we do on July ninth is tackle the use matrix. And also see if we can come to some sort of a consensus on. The format or layout. We've got the one that Tim and Eric have been working on. We've got a couple of examples here, and I think I've seen a few more floating around. And Rob, if maybe between now and the time you get. If maybe between now and the time you get the. Notice the board packing out for July nine. I know that we've seen a few different formats, and maybe if you could dig those out. And circulate them again. And we can finally have that discussion. And come to, hopefully come to an agreement.
I think that's gonna take. I will need to suggest something slightly, slightly different that. We took. The, the board was sent around copies of eight or nine different ordinances for communities around us. And the question to the board, and this is over here, was. Do any of these strike use being a really good format for using? For our new ordinance. Not, not the particular land use controls and stuff like that, just the way the law ordinance is made up. And we did not. Really. As far as I know, probably very few people actually booked those. Those ordinances. And so. Eric and I just. He just said, okay, well, let's just go with the city of London. And. That's what we did, and we spent quite a bit of time on that. You've seen, the board has seen a couple of. Early drafts of some of the preliminary chapters. But not much, and we haven't had a systematic way to work ourselves through that. What I suggest we do is just continue that. Effort and. Allow Rob and I and Eric and Renee to get together and sort of. Pull that information and then what you have. Just can't bring this stuff like that, a big giant. Package of information, maybe it's just gonna, or the board is just gonna be overwhelmed. As it was in your. And. I just don't feel like we have time to. Put around with that. It's not really. None of this has anything to do with actual land use regulations, it's just strictly a format.
And I, I guess that'd be interesting is. Even if you didn't change the formatting. This year, you can come to a consensus. Just formatting. The zoning ordinance that wouldn't require any foreign article. If you're not changing anything in the.
Well, essentially, what the article be. Are, are you in favor of adopting the new zoning ordinance? It'd be completely new document.
But nothing, like I'm saying. Say next year at a ballot, you do change, you have the downtown, you have all that, then say in twenty twenty seven, you're like, all right, we want to just clean this up and reformat it. You're just reformatting, not changing anything. I mean, I think the reformat needs to happen with the new ones, and I think you could do that a little bit. Just in part. It'd be something to look into. Legally too, but.
Well, we wouldn't be asking you to do it, to do that.
What's that? No, I know, I'm just, I'm just thinking through it a little bit as far as like zoning ordinance changes and you're just. I don't know, have you seen that at all, where like a, just a formatting, because it wouldn't, if, if a town were just to reformat the ordinance, they wouldn't have to put a ballot for that. Would they?
Yes, we would, yeah. There's a pretty low bar for what has to go in the ballot. But yeah, I think they might need to.
The idea was. We're not gonna change any of the land use controls or requirements of R three, R one, three, five, and the other. Just gonna reformat it. Thinking was that. While that's not terribly controversial, and easily argued why we're doing that. The EV district, forest, downtown. Are the things that are changing. And we didn't want to change too much once. We didn't want to deal with the rural districts. We had an idea of some lake shore issues, and that's, we didn't want to deal with that. Not yet. There'll be. Sections in the ordinance where we just reserve. Lake shore unhappy. So. Message to the community is. Nothing's changed in R one, three and five and so forth. Everything is changing. All the changes are gonna deal with. EV. Downtown.
Well. Yes. But technically, R one would be changing, because R one's turning into EV. And the other thing.
An existing roof floor is getting revealed.
Right, and we're, we're removing, and three and five are getting changed because you've got a new use table. Well, you're not gonna change any of the uses. You don't know what they are.
Yep, dude.
So you're not, so your, your matrix is not gonna have three or five on it.
It will have three and five on it, it just won't have.
We filled in exactly. Whether it makes sense or not.
Correct, that's what Tim suggested. Is that you just make it, you just take it what we have today?
Make it exactly.
Put it into the new format. What Tim suggested, so that there's no.
So the only thing we're gonna work on next time is the other three, is the new three.
Okay, so you're hopefully working on them in a format.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, with that, I mentioned in some areas, which I think we're gonna confirm, but in the downtown. Just as a heads up, and again, I, we think it's over the hundred lots, but. If anything is a hundred lots or less, then the certified mail. Comes into play, so we're gonna confirm that the downtown and that could, and as the map gets confirmed, we'll need to. Just double check and keep an eye on that, that's the only one that's really at risk of maybe. I, I just looking at it visually quickly, I've tried to sit there and count, but.
Roof floor was though, well, we're actually. What we're doing, we're taking a big chunk out of the R one, which marks he downed it off.
But any new district bounds that you're creating, so by creating a downtown district. If you're impacting less than a hundred by creating that downtown, they would have to be certified now, but. Yeah, so that, so stay tuned on that, we're gonna try to point that number down, but.
So back to the formatting issue, are we wanting to form a subcommittee or?
I don't think otherwise we're gonna get, gonna get this done, you know?
I guess. I mean, in, in theory. I don't know that this is the best way to do it, but in theory. The format could be decided. At any time before we put the war, or we have the public hearings.
No.
Why not?
The format start, begins to start to. Enable us to understand our own, our own product, our own ordinance, and how it's put together and how it's tied together. It will expose areas that are inconsistent. So a, as we, as we come up with a land use. Decision. Whether that be. Use or a dimensional requirement or whatever, you stick it in there. You begin to see how the wording of that one compares to the wording in other sections. There are cross references that have to be. Carefully. Checked and, and I, I just. I just don't see the point of waiting. To do that, you know? Here's, here's the outline, this is where you put things when you determine what. What we want. That's all this is.
Well, what's more important, having the outline or having the things that we put in?
Both, do them at the same time.
Well, I'm. I'm honestly not comfortable with eleven and ordinance format.
All right, then, I'm done, I am just friggin' done. You know? David. We got nothing. Nothing written down, we're like three years into this.
Then do you want to have a subcommittee?
I do.
Who wants to volunteer to be on the subcommittee?
I can do it.
Dan and you. And Renee and Rob. I'm happy with that.
As we get, my feeling right now is that July ninth meeting. Could be the last meeting that we could have. Completely. To this, to this thing. Because I can see Laramie coming in. The last of July. And we having them for one meeting a month. Which means the other meeting's gonna be for everybody else plus this. So the July nine is a. Not a drop dead, but. It's gotta be. We gotta come up with something good in order to run forward, because we're gonna lose a lot of time that we've had. Because of, you know, if they come in for the end of July.
So July ninth, our goal. Then is for the end of the meeting on July ninth, our goal would be to have a complete use matrix. And a map that we. I don't know if we'll have consensus on it, but a map that we vote on. So we're gonna have a map. And uses. Then the next thing will be the dimensional matrix. Then, once you've got those three things, you have the core of your ordinance and, and you, you know, you can build around that.
And you need your, you need your use and dimensionally before you do your map, because it's gonna be based, you're gonna base your. You're gonna base it on where you want to put it, based on what uses you put it down.
And, and I don't. I'm gonna guess that we. Move through the matrix pretty quickly. Cause I think it's gonna be apparent to most of us what belongs where. So, you know. Two weeks from now, at the end of July ninth, we're gonna be farther along than we probably give ourselves credit for at the moment.
So. I see the word, the focus group thing happening. Once we got. All of that ration. If we go back, say, we hear you write. I'm, I'm just kind of done with focus groups, because we've heard everything probably that's going to be suggested. See the point from trying to set up a business leaders meeting, I think we know what their issues are, Rob knows obviously what they are.
I mean, it's a deliverable in the grant and we have to do it. Then, but once, I think, once we've got a map. A use matrix and a dimensional matrix.
And you pick a Saturday, you pick a evening, one or the other.
Are we on the right track or the wrong track?
Track, the wrong track. We're on the wrong track, sorry.
You'll still have time to amend in the, you know, before you did the public hearings, I think that'll, yeah. You know, the goal then would be probably like August.
I mean, at that point, you change your draft. And you, you know, you, you listen to what you heard. But I've got a feeling there's gonna be, in these areas, I don't see where there's going to be great disagreement. I mean, we listened to them the first time, we've taken that. Put it into, we're putting it into it this time. And I think, yeah, you're going, you're, you're circling back to them to make sure we heard everything that they said. And I'm not sure if it's the same group to go back, or if you have it open to everybody, or.
I, I think you have your, well, the way we did it with the master plan was we had. A. Focus group. And then, once we had the thing nailed down to the point where we thought it was presentable. Then we had another group, which had, which was comprised of more people. In, yeah, I, I don't think it was by invitation, I think it was sort of a general announcement. And that's when. We had the people say, yeah, you're on the right track, you got it right. And some people said. No, you don't have it right, but the, the majority.
You had to sign up. We were interested in a particular section. To split it up into different chapters.
That was the first.
No, it was, this was well after it was like well drafted and. Invited people that hadn't been involved. To. To get involved and to read it and give our thoughts and.
Are, are we talking about the first five chapters or the most recent?
Yeah, that, that was towards the end there, and, and I don't, I don't know that you reached, reached out to a certain individual and said, would you do this? I think it was more of an open invite, but please sign up on the chapter you want to be involved with.
Yeah, and then we had one big focus group at our public, a pre-hearing, I don't know what, what we want to call it. But a, after those, which you're referring to. Then we had a sort of a more general. Look at the whole thing type of group. And. I think. We're focused already, so I, I don't see where we would need.
You seem to be heading down the same path.
But we're, we're not quite.
Early September?
Point yet. It would have to be early September, because, because Renee turns into a pumpkin at the end of September.
No.
Isn't it September thirtieth, doesn't that, doesn't your contract?
Twenty twenty six.
When?
Twenty twenty six, our, our contract ends. Does end prior to that.
I thought it was September.
Second, that's okay, no, definitely not the September. The HOP grant goes through September thirtieth of twenty twenty six. And then our contract, I believe, was through the end of the fiscal year, so June of twenty twenty six. So I think it gets you through to, through the, the March vote. Cause I think the goal, I, I'll double check that, it's either January thirtieth or June thirtieth, but.
Okay.
That's good news, yeah, well, that's good news.
Yeah, I'm sorry for any confusion on that, no, yeah, it's not September, no, so we have, we have.
I don't know why I'm thinking September.
Our glide path needs to be focused around the required hearings. She, mid-January. Oh, that's right, because we're SB two now. Have to have it in the can.
So we've really got about five months.
That's a lot longer than I thought.
To get this to the finish line. I think it's doable, I don't think it will take that long.
I think you're right.
For us to come together on uses and dimensional requirements and a map. And once we have that, that is the core, everything gets built around that. Then our focus becomes on fine tuning it, making sure the definitions are airtight, making sure cross references don't conflict. Which is, you know. Doable, I think, in that amount of time.
You don't have.
Public hearing.
We don't have contract hours.
We don't have contract hours in to the level that we're talking.
Well, we can.
So we gotta do it ourselves.
Put some sweat equity in.
You're right, doesn't have the staff to.
Right.
You know.
Right.
I I imagine in the city of Lebanon, they probably such a staff brings the draft ordinance to the board and says, what do you think?
I'm sure they do. They have like probably what, four or five people in the planning department. More, more, more.
We'd ask to review it too. So you would have it to your town attorney.
Maybe we can, uh, twist the arm of one of our ZBA members who happens to be in the Lebanon planning department to help us out.
Approval of minutes?
Um.
Yeah. Oh, we did that already?
Yeah, we did.
See, so we passed that off.
We did. Um.
We can, we let.
I know, I know.
I think we can.
There you go. Okay, all right, rules of procedure. We could either put that discussion off if people have changes.
I would move to table the meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Meeting.
Yeah.
May has made.
I'll second it.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close extensions. Okay, that is tabled. Engineering firm for Laramie Farms.
Let the town figure out who they want.
What?
Let the town figure out who they want.
Well, we are the town.
We are the town.
Now, in some of this context.
No, it it is, it is the responsibility of the planning board.
Okay.
And the question is, we could certainly task our town manager with that. Or we could go through a process of getting to two or three firms, a small, you know, a small group of us and then bring one or two of them in as we did with Renee and the other contractors. Um, Rob and I talked about possible firms, what was it, two or three weeks ago? And we've done nothing since it's really the board's responsibility. So I, you know, I would suggest that we have a small subcommittee that would do preliminary, preliminary selection and then bring two or three in full board, to the full board and spend, you know, twenty minutes with each or half hour with each. And by that time, we will have seen another design iteration.
Okay.
And and we will know what some of the potential problems and pitfalls are and if we can find out from these firms if addressing this kind of pitfall is, uh, something that they regularly do or something not. So.
The developer had the right of approval on that or?
Nope.
No.
Okay, it is, it is strictly
strictly ours.
Strictly, um, the responsibility of the planning board to hire consultants.
Okay.
Well, well.
Who's the town's civil engineer now?
Shore and water, we're using Horizons.
Okay.
Uh, for wetlands and permitting on those kind of items, we're using, uh, Arundel out of, uh, New London. Sent to right angle.
Right, yeah, I think that's right. So.
Why wouldn't we just permit?
Uh, that that's kind of what I was gonna say, you know, we talked, at least I had suggested, I don't know that the board came to consensus on this, but I had suggested water, sewer and stormwater as being three key areas that
Right.
third-party engineering review would be warranted on on that project. If the town already has a standing relationship with a third-party engineering firm that's not otherwise working for Mr. Dubay or or the developer, that truly is an independent third party and is already has subject matter expertise in the town's water and sewer system and already has an existing relationship with the town for those types of services, it makes sense to pitch back on that, I think.
I mean, you know we have water and sewer.
Yeah.
Definitely. And I don't know that we have somebody who focuses on
Stormwater.
Stormwater and other such. Do we, Rob?
Well, the the Horizons that that we worked with extensively on, several, they're right now working for us on big projects.
So for water and sewer, but what about stormwater?
Well, I would say their expertise would would absolutely include that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. So really what, well, I mean, if we took that approach, what we then need to do is just, I think, define their scope of work. So, uh, what is it we want? That's the part that the committee could map out.
If this is their business, maybe they know what we need done.
Yeah, they'll guide us along that that way as well. Cause they've done these things before, probably done third-party reviews for years.
Yeah. Basically, the applicant's gonna come in and hand us a bunch of stuff.
Yes.
We wanna be able, we wanna give it to somebody.
Guys, look at this because we're not.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Does this work?
Right.
Is it operational? Will it do what the applicant says that it will do?
Mm-hmm.
Will it function the way the applicant says it will function? Will it create any issues that we should be aware of? You know, that's the general kind of scope of work.
Yeah, yeah, so my my question is, is Horizons, Horizon, Horizons, have they ever tackled a project of this size and scale?
I'm pretty certain they have.
Yeah.
Yes.
I've worked with them. And not on
You certainly arrange an interview if you wanted to talk with them specifically, or we could do several. I mean, it's totally up to you guys. I'd be fine if the Dave and the subcommittee, they wanna talk to the engineer, comfortable with them, whatever decision you come up with.
I'm just from a process standpoint, I do think this is probably gonna be enough money to have to go through the town purchasing process, uh, which would mean getting them these three quotes. Uh, I agree that leveraging existing relationships is highly valuable. But, uh, Eric?
Excuse me?
Yeah. If the developer is paying for the consult, why would we then need to go through the town purchasing?
Uh, just for good policy and transparency, I
Right.
It does not become a a financial question for taxpayers, but it is just sort of, perhaps it is an exception, but I'm I'm just saying like this is gonna be an amount of money that the town's gonna send a contract forward that would be within our purchase.
We're basically getting re- re- first.
Right.
Do you have, you have a lot of flex.
So, but that's a good point. That's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, there's no town outlay of funds.
Right.
Yeah, and you also have a lot of flexibility and professional services here. You know, it's not a three bid kind of thing. You're not looking for the lowest bid.
Right.
No, and we don't always sign the lowest bid. No, no, that's not, it's not about finding the lowest price. But it is about doing due diligence to make sure you're getting what you wanted of value. That's, but I mean, I think that Dave's correct. Leveraging the existing relationships makes all the sense in the world, especially in water and sewer. Uh, I do think we wanna think a little bit about the evaluation criteria. And I mostly, like the stormwater, where if they say, oh, there's no change in the stormwater, I'll bring it up again, like you said, today versus when it was forested, cause it's very different today versus when it was forested. And those are just different metrics. They just need to know what to evaluate it for.
And that may be something that.
You know, and they can do either one. They just need to be told, right?
Yeah, that may be something once the engineer is signed up.
Yep.
Beats with us.
Yeah.
We share what our, right?
Yeah.
Generalized thoughts are, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, no, no, they that's David there. They're gonna just tell me what to do and they're gonna do it, right? This is what they do.
Yeah. And and and, you know, you should give some thought to a scope of work for them on this front. I I had, uh, before Laramie Farms came in, I think I asked Rob to send me the twenty twelve minutes of the, when I was the circuit rider planner here, the last time Laramie Farms came in. And we had gotten to the point of starting to think about a scope for third-party review. And at that time, we were, we were wanting the the third-party reviewer to quantify the amount of water demand that would be generated by the development, determine the amount of water pressure that would be provided by the proposed booster station and an analysis of that system's adequacy, adequacy for both residential and firefighting purposes, assurance that the proposed materials, uh, are consistent with the town's existing infrastructure. Again, you, when they know the town's existing infrastructure, there's, you know, that that makes sense to piggyback on that, on that knowledge. Outline of maintenance and replacement schedule and the associated costs for major components of the proposed booster station. And then ultimately, you know, if the development gets approved, uh, third-party construction inspection would would potentially, you know, be another, another service that that would be needed. But that was, and that was just on water. You know, you'd be, you'd be looking at similar considerations on the sewer side and then stormwater's a different animal entirely. But some, some scope of work that is roughly along those lines.
What about traffic? Need to look at anything that they're coming up with on the traffic side. They've, they've already hired another firm, VHB.
Yes.
I try to get here. I feel like if we have input on DOT new process.
Right. That's addition?
Did they get a permit?
It's still, it's, it's, yeah.
You know, they're gonna do their stuff, submit to DOT, they're gonna have a hearing that should have input on that, I imagine. Does DOT have, have hearings?
I don't think they have a hearing per se. They would just mandate that the developer do X, Y, and Z mitigation activities, you know, that could be a left turn pocket, it could be other, you know, traffic control devices or 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 the like. That would, that would be a requirement that they place on the applicant just to issue the driveway permit in the first place.
You think they would solicit our Jake's turn out?
Solicitor.
Uh, well, I I mean, they they are sort of soliciting our input via Rob, I think, primarily.
And we had, we had the, the, sort of the kickoff was what they call the scoping meeting, where there was town representatives, state developer representatives, engineering for the developer. VHB was there. This, we talked about this, the state actually hires a sub. What was the name of those guys?
Uh, it's probably Stan Tech.
Stan Tech.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of fingers in the pie, we'll say, cause it's, it's certainly a lot of engineers.
But the DOT will definitely, and this is not the district people. When it, when it's major driveway, it goes to the Bureau of Traffic in Concord and so the people that are communicating with Rob are the traffic ground folks, but they'll keep him in the loop and he can be kind of a conduit between us and the state process. Um, and I think that will probably work fine. If we have particular issues that we see as a board that we wanna make sure get brought up, we can always authorize Rob to write a letter or.
And you've already done that with, with the developers engineer and the, and the sidewalks. That was a big thing that we talked about last time.
Yeah. So, you know, it's, uh, that process will take a little while, the the DOT's process, cause VHB has to, their, their, their engineer, VHB, has to develop the traffic impact study. So they're gonna be out doing counts and doing, you know, uh, in.
Yeah, regional planning was involved too. I didn't, I didn't forget that too.
Yeah, normally they, they, they pretty much.
Aggie was there, Tim was there.
Yeah. So, um.
So what else could possibly need help?
I definitely think the construction supervision. I don't think like our building inspectors can go handle.
That'll be something that I imagine is simple, as simple as that we don't even do this, but require a construction inspection, town utilities.
I, that's, there, there's a provision in the RSA, just like there is for third-party review for third-party inspection.
So.
Sure.
Your, uh, Jim would handle hiring third-party constructions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it would be us.
No. You guys, like the building, building inspector may want some help. He wants a professional help.
The time. The number of units is massive.
Yeah.
See, we really don't get into the architectural side. No, I mean, there's too much, there, there's limits to what we are empowered to do. And there's, uh, oh, uh, the other studies, like school impacts and tax impacts.
That's something will, the board will need to come to some consensus on, still what, what you may want to require or not in terms of, of school impact studies or other special studies.
How do those get done?
Uh. They quantify an estimated number of students that will get generated from the development. They would look at comps probably in the area.
Well, I mean, who, uh, they, who chooses they and who gives them the scope of work? Supposed to look at that.
Uh, I think, generally speaking, the board would, would chat, I think you could give them some leverage in terms of who they choose to do it as long as the board deems that person to be qualified or that firm to be qualified, but.
So we ask the developer to read the study.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not doing the study. They're, they're doing the study.
You don't tell him that this study must be done and this is the person you're gonna do.
No.
No.
Not that. You, you would tell them that you would say, you know, in order for the board to make an informed decision about this under, you know, site plan regulation, X, Y, and Z, we, you know, for this development, given the size and scope and scale of this, we feel like there's a school impact study should be, should be developed and submitted as part of the application, final, you know, final application materials. They, a lot of these used to get done by a guy named Russ Tebow, who's an economist out of La Conia. Russ unfortunately passed away a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and 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 was, you know, probably the person in the state that did the most of these types of school impact studies. Um, so, but I don't know if that's something you that the board feels is necessary, uh, a school impact study or not.
I, I think the public is likely to bring that up as something that should be looked at. At least from, from what I've heard from public so far. Are there any other studies?
Taxes.
Well, the tax impact would be us doing it, wouldn't it? Based on what they say the cost of the project is.
Well, we have a, a tax assessor.
Right.
That's then we would task the assessor with figuring out, you know, what it's gonna add to the grand list. But, yeah, I don't know that we have any real say on that or say on who does it.
What you, what is in, in the, in our site plan regs that is kind of the catch-all here under the major, the, the, you know, the major, uh, site plan is four point one point three. The planning board may require other information it deems necessary in order to evaluate the proposal. This might include, but is not limited to, traffic studies, fiscal impact studies, title search and discussion of natural and historical resource impacts preservation. A school impact study would fall under
Absolutely.
that type of category.
Yeah.
That, that the plan, the, the planning board, you know, may require that, deem it, that deem that study necessary to make an informed decision to the application under that provision, basically, how that would work.
Okay, so the question is, and as much as I think we probably will require at least one of those on the studies, how do we when you talked about the, the school impacts? Tax impact study. How does that get done? You can't just tell them town assessor, it's easily contract service, that's doesn't do that free.
Right.
Who does that kind of stuff?
I, I get.
The applicant would hire an economist or, or, you know.
Or an appraiser.
Right.
Yeah.
Same as the schools. Police and fire, um, just for. Well, that's, that's where we talk to our fire chief and our police chief. And they, according to our regs somewhere, they, they are supposed to look at all of these things and basically make a statement to the planning board if they have the resources or they don't. And I don't remember exactly where that's written down, but it's somewhere in that book. Recreation. Recreation. I'm just.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Out of the sky.
Yeah.
I mean, when this comes in as an application, I'm assuming, would, Rob, would you send it around to all the department heads and solicit their feedback? Yeah, so we're gonna get feedback from, from police and fire and others through that.
And that's.
That internal department head review process.
That's standard in public works, that's, you know, standard operating procedures, when we get a, an application that's what, more than a single family home? All right. Nobody here from the public?
No, for, yeah, I'm lying down. Still on here.
I know, there's nobody.
Who's, who's, um, who's gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Richard.
Second part.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, extensions. Uh, it's nine oh two.
Yep.
Rita said your dad did, did a great job and was very good at their annual meeting tonight, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have any idea, so I, I, I don't know, when he was the keynote speaker.
Hey Nate, can you hang out for just a minute or two?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'll give you the ins too.
He does a very good, uh, he talks about like the history of I eighty-nine and nine one and how that came to be. It, it did, if, if, in the upper valley, the region planning commission library has old Claremont master plans from the early sixties that showed it going.
Oh, it was goes.
We were gonna go, think we're gonna strip zone the whole thing, like, like twelve A is basically, and it was gonna be going through with East Green Mountain Road and the most rural parts of Claremont, like, that's where it was gonna go.
And then imagine across the Brooklyn.
But they, what, what happened is you had Congressman Cleveland, who wanted it going through New London, and Senator.